Time is 6:46 and I will call the November 3rd Planning Board meeting to order at this time. Scott, would you call the roll?
Yes. In attendance, we have Dave Olet, Counselor Bruce Chaney, Michael Delavecchia, Rich McNeil, Amy Lebesic, Planning Director Rob Moore, Assistant Planning Director Tyler Carmichael, and myself. We take the minutes. Scott, call chat. Mr. Chair.
Again, Scott is Recording Secretary. Staff in attendance is Rob and Tyler. Acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? No corrections?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as...
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, our next thing up is PB 2026-004, White Oaks Road, 14-unit condominium subdivision, multifamily site plan, and CUP for performance zoning. We've already voted to accept this application. Okay, so we're all set there. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell us your name?
Sure. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members. My name is Suzanne Brunel. I'm an attorney at Divine Millment Branch. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Sir Melissa and Bill Markey of the Markey Contracting Group. They're here with us this evening. They are seeking a site plan approval for 14-unit townhouse development at White Oaks Road here in Laconia. The property is located in the commercial resort district. It is also located in the performance overlay district. And we are here requesting two performance overlay district conditional use permits, one for density and one for height. Also here tonight is Jeff Merritt of Granite Engineering who will be presenting after me and will respond to any engineering questions. I stay in my lane, so I don't go. So, while I was not here for the October hearing, I did review the meeting online as well as the February meeting where the conceptual plan was presented. And from there, we heard the board's concerns. You were pretty clear. And we've made several modifications to the plan as a direct response to your concerns, the first being building height. So, we have reduced the building height by four feet. It was through gabling the roofs. And the height facing the RV park is now under 35 feet. There's some questions on landscaping. So, there were 309 plantings, which was counted, not by myself, on the plan. And the property is well screened from the street. So, there were two issues, I think, that were a little confusing at the October meeting, which were green space and parking. This project does meet the green space of 60%. We're not looking for any relief on that. And the parking actually exceeds the requirements. So, there are garages in each unit. There's a parking space behind those garages. There are visitors' parking, which are all screened internally in the site, so not seen from the street. At the last meeting, the applicant and the engineers were surprised by the board's reaction as it contrasted sharply with the feedback that they received during the February conceptual meeting. At that time, there was no opposition to density. The members expressed support for the project, and the recommendation is that we proceed. The technical review meetings, there were a couple, I understand. They also went well and included a recommendation to move forward. The proposed staff report confirms these statements. So, based on the feedback from both the planning board and the TRC, they moved forward with the plan as presented. At the October hearing, there was a letter that was filed by Ron Stafford on behalf of White Oaks Holding LLC, which he spoke against the project. Wade Stafford withdrew that opposition this afternoon. Mr. Stafford has withdrawn the opposition to the applicant's revised project plans as submitted to the board on October 30th, 2025. You should have all received a copy of that. If not, I have. Everyone has that? Okay. So, while we understand the board's concern with the number of units, this project is not financially feasible with fewer than 14 units and with a reduced height of 35 feet for all of the buildings. As a member of my own zoning board, I understand this is a common argument that you hear and a common refrain. And in this case, it's factually accurate. The housing costs, as everyone knows, have dramatically increased. New Hampshire continues to face a well-documented housing shortage. Costs to design and permit a project, build it, sell the units has skyrocketed. This is our reality. The applicant has already expended considerable time and money into this project. He would certainly like to see the project through to the end. And this is precisely why the performance overlay district exists. So, per Section 235211 of the city's zoning ordinances, was the creation of the performance overlay district. It's an innovative land use control, which was adopted under New Hampshire RSA 674. And the purpose is to promote flexibility by allowing redevelopment projects to deviate from certain base zoning requirements. The flexibility for a redevelopment project being proposed is to, and I quote, "largely independent from following the current land use regulations." I'm going to read that again because it's really important. The flexibility for redevelopment project being proposed to, quote, "largely," being proposed to be largely independent from following current land use regulations. So, what you can deviate from include the selection of the land use itself, density, setbacks, signs, buffers, building heights, lot sizes, lot dimensions, and parking requirements otherwise applicable to the property. So, it means that this board has the authority, both from your own zoning ordinances and the state, to grant two conditional use permits requested for density and height for this project. We also looked at the city's master plan and the legislative record behind that, creating that overlay district. It was clear that the intent, again, was to provide flexibility to meet the needs of a growing community, encouraging redevelopment, attracting investment, and expanding the city's tax base. The district was designed to encourage year-round mixed-use, commercial and residential developments, to attract redevelopment investment in the downtown resort area, increase the city's tax base, provide zoning flexibility and not rigidity with regard to setbacks, density, height, and parking requirements through the planning board review, and address underutilized properties. So, as you all know, this property is vacant, so it is currently underutilized. It generates a small amount of tax revenue and contributes little to the community fabric. One of the purposes of the performance overlay district is to increase tax revenue. We estimate that that would bring in about $229,000 a year. By reducing the units to 10, you would lose 30% of that, or $66,000 and change annually. So, the proposed project would correct and transform the lot into an active, tax-producing, visually cohesive residential development. State law and the city's zoning ordinance provide the legal background for allowing changes from the standard zoning requirements for the property. And the requirements for granting the performance overlay conditional use permits are set forth in Section 23521E of your zoning ordinances. These were provided with the application, but were not discussed at the last meeting. I think that the meeting got continued, and so there was not an opportunity for those to be presented. So, I'm going to briefly go over those, each of the criteria, so you can see how this project complies with these conditions, which are needed in order to grant the conditional use permits. First, the project should be well-planned and an integrated development. So, these are professionally, this is a professionally-designed project. They are using licensed engineers and architects. The developer is a New Hampshire resident with local ties. As I said, they're not just going to jump on a plane. They're going to be here, and they take pride in their work, and they want to do a good job. It provides a thoughtful transition between the commercial and recreational uses in the Weers Beach area. There are a lot of uses allowed in this particular zone that are significantly more impactful than 14 townhouses. They include, I love this list, an amusement arcade and park, a conference center, a movie theater with a drive-in, a private club, a daycare center, a taxi service, eating and drinking places, that's what your zoning ordinance calls, retail sales shopping center, a hotel, a motel, an inn, or a laundromat. So, we can all agree that all of these allowed uses would be, have a much more significant impact on the adjacent properties than this residential project. These are all commercial uses in the setback height requirements, green space and parking requirements. Include a 60-foot building height requirement, again, significantly more intrusive than what we're proposing. And once again, we meet the green space requirement for a residential complex, which is 60%, whereas the commercial would only be 25%. Number two is mitigating impacts to traffic utilities, municipal services, and natural resources. So, the access driveway was specifically put away from the intersection to reduce traffic conflicts. The reconstruction of the sidewalk will promote walkability and reduce vehicular dependency. The units will be connected to the existing utilities and has sufficient capacity. And the onsite stormwater pool will capture and treat runoff, which minimizes the impact to the city's infrastructure and neighbors. Number three, limiting new access point. One single driveway. It's fantastic from White Oaks Road, lesser traveled of the two frontages. Number four, transitioning and protecting residential abutters. So, as I said, the proposed use is residential, which is consistent with the surrounding areas that have single-family, multifamily, and mixed use, and will blend in. The existing retaining wall provides separation between the abutting properties. The enhanced landscaping, which is being provided by the applicant, will provide buffering. The parking is all internal and screened from view. The stormwater pond further separates the residential and recreation uses. And the project would also provide a transition and buffering between the smaller residential homes west of the site and the large future development of the former water park site, which is directly adjacent on the easterly side of the property. Number five, high-quality site and architectural design. The colors of the building, the materials, the textures were all chosen carefully to complement with the natural surroundings. There is significant landscaping, and stormwater pond adds visual appeal and screening. And then the interior island, which is also landscaped, promotes a community feel and curb appeal. Number six, minimizing visualized impact of parking. Each, again, as I had said, each unit has a garage. There's a space in front of it. The guest parking is well-located internally and screened from the street. Number seven, pedestrian and vehicular connectivity. Reconstruction of the existing sidewalk will connect residents and neighbors to nearby recreation and commercial areas. Finally, number eight, open spaces and pedestrian amenities. As previously indicated, the proposed reconstruction of the sidewalk will be provided. The landscaping areas have been designed for residents, including the center island for a meeting space. Each unit includes a patio and a deck for outdoor living, giving the owners ample exterior space. They have also created a large gathering space by installing a retaining wall next to, well, will install a retaining wall next to Building 1 for a meeting space, as well as the center island previously discussed. So, the project, again, meets the green space requirements. So, in summary, this project meets or exceeds all eight criteria required for the granting of the performance overlay conditional permits. It fulfills the city's vision for the overlay districts. It aligns with the master plan and contributes meaningfully to housing supply, aesthetics, and the local economy. Please keep in mind that the proposed project is permitted under residential requirements, and as such would be significantly less impactful to the surrounding community than any of the commercial uses allowed by right for this property, again, where the requirement allows for a 60-foot height for the buildings and a 25% green space. So, we respectfully request the approval of these two conditional use permits for density and height in connection with the site plan application and approval of the site plan itself. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Are they all set? Thank you.
I have one question.
Sure.
You said the height of the units closest to the campground are less than 35.
Yes.
What would the heights be on the second unit closest to the road?
So, I'm going to let the engineer get into the height. There's a lot of slope and design and things outside the purview of the legal mind. Any other questions? Dodging it. The guy who knows, answer the question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, I'm Jeff Merritt. I'm an engineer with Granite Engineering. We provided some of the new exhibits to the board this evening. I'll kind of go through those. It'll directly answer your question on height and how that plays out on the property. And then it'll also kind of showcase our open space and density question that some of the board members had. So, relative to height, as Attorney Brunel mentioned, we did take another look at the buildings out here. If you remember that first rendering of the buildings, we had a, what I would call a monopitch roof, one single pitch from front to back, spans the whole distance, requires the slope of the roof to go the entire width of the building. And that results in a higher building height. What we've done and what's illustrated on the new renderings here is a gabled roof approach. This will shrink the building by four feet, five inches, as compared to last rendering. The plan that you show right here is if you were in the middle of the development, looking at the building towards the RV park, that's the facade that you see. If we flip the sheet one more, you'll see the opposite view, which would be an illustration of the backside that kind of faces the RV park. If you look at this elevation, you'll note that we've lost a story. And this is what I was trying to illustrate or discuss last meeting, is the topography out there is such that we've tucked one of the elevations or one of the floors into the grade out there. We actually took it a step further to try to illustrate that. If we flip the sheet one more, there is a cross-section view that we prepared here. This really shows how the grades of the property work relative to the buildings. Let me orient you. This is our property line with the RV park right here. This is the building. This is the two-story elevation I just showed you. This will be the three-story elevation that I showed you first. And then here's our landscaped area in the middle. And finally, our building that's closest to Endicott Street. So, the grade slopes considerably across the property out there. If you look at that right-hand building there, the one that's tucked into the grade, you can see how that first story is actually buried out there. We took it a step further on the plan there to show that retaining wall that's on our property, that's to the rear of that building where the RV park is. And then we've actually delineated on that, the approximate elevation or height from the top of that wall to the ridge line. And that measures 24 feet, five inches. So, if you're looking at that from the RV park side, you're looking at about 24 and a half feet or so. Someone on the board last meeting mentioned the way that the ordinance reads relative to building height. It's not just the highest point on the building. It's actually the highest point relative to the average grade around the building. So, because these buildings slope, it's not a real trivial calculation, if you will. So, we ran those calculations for the board. The uphill units, those that are closest to our uphill abutter, those buildings we're proposing at, with this change, would be 35.65 feet and 37.42 feet. So, we're just over that 35-foot requirement, but we're far under what would be allowed at a commercial rate or something like that. And again, we've lowered the roof by four feet, five inches. I think last time we were talking, we were roughly 29 feet, as viewed from the RV park, and we're at 24 and a half or so. So, we wanted to clarify that with the board. The downhill buildings, if you keep looking at that and how the property slopes towards Endicott Street, you'll see that in order for us to work with the grades on the downhill building, you kind of have the opposite approach, where you have the extra story poking out on that lower level. So, it's built into the slope here, built into the slope here, extra story here, extra story here. And that's so that we can step down the property and work with the natural topography that's out there. Obviously, we didn't make the property. We're just trying to work with what we have out there. As Attorney Brunel mentioned, we are in a zone that has a lot of different uses allowed. It's not your traditional residential zone. It's not your traditional commercial zone. There's just a variety of different uses that are allowed in this area. We're proposing a use that doesn't require really a tall building, in our opinion. The commercial uses that are allowed out here could go up to 60 feet. We're nowhere near that. We think this is a far more appropriate use on this property than some of the other uses that would be allowed by right out here. And we think it's one of the least impacting alternatives that there is in this district. We also prepared a section that showed if this was a commercial development and how that would scale relative to our abutters. If we flip one more sheet, there's a similar cross-section, but this time we superimposed a commercial building on it. Orient you. This little, what looks little right now is the retaining wall. And this big structure is what 60 feet would look like relative to that. It's not what we're proposing. We're not suggesting that. We're just trying to illustrate that there's a zone that a lot of things could come out and be put out here on that are permitted by right. And we think we have one, a use that's actually more appropriate out here. The other thing to mention is, on our site plan, our buildings are at least 25 feet off of that property line. There's only 10 feet required by the code, but we're 25 feet. So, we have a good buffer out there. If it's a commercial use, there actually isn't any setbacks on that property line, similar to how the RV park doesn't have a setback on theirs. So, again, we're just trying to illustrate that we think this use is appropriate out here. The next topic that I was going to touch base in one of the exhibits that we prepared was a, relative to the green space and the density. We'll call this the, no, one more after that. Call this the green plan. What we did on this is we just highlighted the plan to kind of illustrate those areas that are indeed green space. It's a little hard to see on just a black and white plan, so we put a little bit of color to this. We were caught off guard, I guess, by the density discussion last meeting. We had done our level best to kind of show the board the project at a conceptual level before we put the time and expense into fully engineering that. So, that did catch us off guard. At the concept meeting, there really wasn't any opposition to density. The feasibility of the project, as Attorney Brunel mentioned, really does hinge on the density. So, we're still proposing the 14 units. The color plan that we show here shows the green space of 60%. That's what's required in the district. We're not proposing to decrease the coverage out there, or, excuse me, the green space out there. We're not asking for relief for a CUP from that. We're adhering to that. If this was a commercial development, the coverage goes way down from there. So, it goes down to only required 25%, whereas we provide 60. So, again, we're not proposing that, but it's just an illustration of where this is a better transitional use relative to what else is out there. We also showed on this plan the center island and that additional recreation area near Unit 1. We talked at last meeting that there is some areas on site that we believe the residents will use for recreational purposes, one being that nice center island that we proposed out there. There's room for seating, whether it be benches or picnic tables or a small gathering area. And then there is another recreation area, which is near Unit 1. This area in here. It's not necessarily flat today. The proposal would be to make it flat and usable. There's a wall that's being proposed there. There's some considerable expense that goes into construction of a wall. So, it's an attempt to create a nice usable area for the residents in that pocket. And then, of course, there's some private, if you will, recreation space, which includes patios and decks. And each unit would have those so that people could sit outside and enjoy the area in their private area. The other recreational opportunities are really relative to the area that we're in as opposed to the property. You know, I don't think I have to tell you folks, but across the street, there's a giant park. It's really within walking distance. The Weers Community Park is really a short walk distance from us. There is a playground there. There's some walking trails. We have a sidewalk from our site that would take you right across the street, take you right behind the fire department there, and then into the community park. That's a short walk away. Weers Beach is just a little bit further down the road. Also, pedestrian access directly to Weers Beach, host of activities and recreational activities there. There's the Daytona Plum Park, the miniature golf. There's restaurants, all within walkable distance to this property. So, there's not only areas on the property that can be used for recreation, but we're also in an area that really makes it feasible for these residents to walk to other recreation areas. So, that's what I wanted to show with the exhibits. I'm certainly happy to answer further questions that the board makes.
Any questions? I think we're set. Thank you very much.
Forgive me, but I don't understand the spike at the top of the page.
Yeah?
The two green spikes with the...
Oh, this and this?
Yes.
That's the property.
I understand that. But why the white in the middle of those two?
That's somebody else's property.
That's another law neighbor.
That's somebody else's property.
Got it.
Someone took a bite out of the property years ago.
I should also tell you, I appreciate anybody that can tell a lawyer what to do. You're already ahead of the game. That's my question. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's 7:12. I'll open it up for, to the public. Anybody want to speak for or against? Come on up, state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Mike Magnia. I live on Elm Street in Laconia. I lived there for about the past year. I've lived in the Weers before that. I lived in Weers, a little neighborhood across from the train tracks for about three years. I think a project like this would be great for the area. I have a lot of friends who live in Pier 3 condos. I have a couple of friends who live down the road in Governor's Crossing. I think providing, you know, an area even closer to the Weers would be great for that zone. I think it would clean up the space as well. Condos are a great option. I mean, the condos over here on Elm Street gave me the opportunity to purchase a house or my own property. So, I think putting condos there, right in the Weers, would really liven up the area, give the opportunity for people to move in. And like I said, I have a lot of friends over there. And just, you know, providing some more housing, I think, would be great in that zone. So, I'm definitely for it. And I think I speak for a lot of folks that I work with in the area as well. Something like this would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:13. We'll open it up for staff report.
All right. So, for findings of fact, the application is complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. At its February 4th, 2025 meeting, the planning board performed a conceptual review of the project. The board recommended that the applicant keep the height of the structures at or under the maximum residential height allowed for the district. The board expressed they were in favor of the project. The application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at its August 20th, 2025 meeting. After discussion with the committee members, it was mutually agreed that the applicant would return for a second review by the TRC. The updated application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at its September 26, 2025 meeting. Their comments have been incorporated in the recommended conditions of approval. At its October 7th, 2025 meeting, the planning board continued the application to its November 3rd, 2025 meeting for further review and consideration of the proposed structure height. The applicant submitted revised plans and elevations depicting reduced height of the upper structures. And from there, we have the recommended conditions of approval. First up are the pre-construction requirements. All conditions in this section must be completed at least two weeks prior to the commencing of any work on site. Plans must be revised and submitted to the planning department to include the following. A plan depicting the proposed unit numbers with their corresponding 911 addresses. The applicant must submit one of the following performance guarantees for site improvement and restoration security, including but not limited to street work, utility installations, landscaping, and final pavement to the planning department, cash or check in an amount equal to 11% of the total estimated cost for all site work to be placed into escrow and returned to the applicant upon completion of the project, or a performance bond in an amount equal to the total estimated cost for all site work with the city as the obligee. Condominium documents must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. These documents must reflect that the association be responsible for the water service, beginning at the water main valve, and individual units will be responsible for their service from the curb stop in. Additionally, fire services will need to be included in these documents as well. These documents must be recorded at the Bellknap County Register of Deeds at the applicant's expense. The addresses for all units must be updated by the Department of Public Works to ensure compliance with RSA 231133 and 133-A. A 911 addressing plan must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. The applicant must possess all required permits and approvals granted by federal, state, and municipal boards or agencies. All permits and approvals must be in place prior to the signing and recording of the final plans in MYLAR. Should any permit or approval be revoked at any time during the project, all work must cease until a new permit or approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided to the applicant, by the applicant, to the planning department. Four final plan sets in a MYLAR plan must be submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the planning department. The MYLAR plan and notice of action must be recorded at the Bellknap County Register of Deeds at the applicant's expense. Roja controls must be in place and inspected and approved by the planning department. The planning department will perform regular inspections to ensure roja controls are installed and maintained correctly. The planning department will perform regular inspections to ensure roja controls are installed and maintained correctly. The planning department will perform regular site inspections to ensure compliance with city regulations and conditions of this approval. And a pre-construction meeting must be held between the developer and representatives from the departments of public works, planning, fire, police and water. Unless otherwise specified, all escrow checks must be received by the respective departments no later than one week following the pre-construction meeting. All other requirements in this section must be completed prior to conducting the pre-construction meeting. For construction requirements, all condition, all conditions in this section must be met during the construction of the project. All specif- all specifications for municipal water service as required by the water department apply to all construction. Uh, the water department must inspect all work on all water main and service lines. The applicant must adhere to all specifications as required by the Laconia Fire Department. A fire sprinkler system must be installed in accordance with current New Hampshire State Fire Code and city ordinances. A separate water service line or exterior shut-off for this system is required. Private trash and recycling services are required. If a dumpster, uh, dumpster or trash can enclosure is used, it must be located on a concrete pad and screened from view on all sides. The required number of parking spaces must be delineated by paint, sign or other method as approved by the planning department. For post-construction requirements, all conditions in this section must be met prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. Uh, floor plan for each unit must be provided to the assessing department. Bear with me here. Of, uh, final as-built design application and fee for the project must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. Snow storage and/or removal must be provided by the owner so drainage structures function properly and the required parking spaces can be utilized. Impact fees in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents per new dwelling unit must be paid to the planning department. Uh, the project and all associated conditions must be completed by no later than November third, twenty thirty-two. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application filed with the Laconia Planning Department, by the completion date, this approval is null and void. In accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, this project is exempt from all regulatory changes for seven years from the date of approval. This exemption shall only apply if the applicant commences active and substantial development of the property within three years from the date of approval. This project shall achieve active and substantial development when site work and infrastructure improvements have commenced and twenty percent of the foundation permits are issued inactive. In accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, this project shall be considered vested upon substantial completion of the approved improvements. This project shall achieve substantial completion when a hundred percent of the site work and infrastructure are complete and eighty percent of the certificates of occupancy are issued.
And that is that.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
We missed part of it.
I can repeat it for you if you'd like.
Everybody here wants to...
You have three more chances tonight on your applications.
I've really missed you last week.
Yep, that's not my forte.
Any discussion from the board?
I'm not far. Okay, I'll look for a motion to... I'll make a motion to approve application PB twenty twenty-six zero zero four, provide escrow with conditions of approval presented in the staff report.
I'll second that.
All in favor? It passes? Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is PB two zero two six dash zero one five, five zero Lighthouse Cliffs. Boundary line adjustment for parking encroachment. Uh, is this motion, I mean, is this application, uh, complete and ready for acceptance?
It is.
Can I have a motion to accept this?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor? Applicant here and ready to present?
Yeah, I was told that it was just gonna be approved and I just needed to be present.
Okay, could you state your name and where you're from?
My name is Lori Adams and I'm the executive assistant to the project executive at Berdith Bay, Aqua Vista.
So, I, I can give a brief rundown of what transpired. So, many years ago, when this project was approved back in two thousand and seven, there's that, um, uh, water tower up at the top of Aqua Vista. Uh, there are some public parking spaces, uh, that are available there for people that need to go actually into the building to do any work, um, specifically for municipal employees. Uh, one of the spaces is actually encroaching on the residential parcel next to it. Uh, so they're just looking for a, a boundary line of adjustment of, um, just, I think it's like a hundred and some odd square feet.
Looking to carve out the one parking spot.
Yeah. It, just to clean it up so that way the parking spots are not on the residential lot and it's all in the municipal lot.
You run that by everybody and we're not...
Yep.
Yeah, it was very inconsequential. It's, uh, it is a very, 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 very minor.
Yeah, okay.
It's, uh, there was, they could have, the, there was two options. They could do the boundary line adjustment or they could do an easement. The property owner for the residents did not wanna do an easement, just wanted it, thought it would be cleaner for them personally if it was just...
Sold it once and for all.
Yep.
Yep.
So, um, so that's why they're here tonight, just for that one parking spot to be carved out.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we'll have you sit down. We're gonna open the public hearing at seven twenty-one. Anybody here like to speak for or against this application? Seeing no takers, I guess at seven twenty-two, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, at that time, I guess we've already had the staff report. Maybe you wanna...
Uh, yeah, I'll just read the findings of fact and conditions for the record. The application is complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. The application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at its October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting. Their comments have been incorporated in the condition, recommended conditions of approval, which are, four final plan sets and a Mylar plan must be submitted to, reviewed and approved by the planning department. The Mylar plan and notice of action must be recorded at the Belknap County Register of Deeds at the applicant's expense. A new deed must be recorded at the Belknap County Register of Deeds at the applicant's expense to complete the conveyance of the land. Uh, the project and all associated conditions must be completed by no later than November third, twenty thirty-two. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application filed with the Laconia Planning Department by the completion date, this approval is null and void. And then all previous conditions from the June nineteenth, two thousand and seven, planning board approval, which are not altered by this approval, remain in effect.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
At this time, I guess we'll, uh, any discussion among the board? Then I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve application PB two zero two six dash zero one, one five, for fifty Lighthouse Cliffs. With the conditions and approval presented by the staff report.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. You're all set? Thank you. Next up is PB two zero dash sus, two six dash zero one six, one five five Lake Street. Condominium conversion of existing units and structures. Is this application complete and ready for acceptance? I need a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion to accept the, um, application PB two zero two six dash zero one six at fifty-five Lake Street as complete with the findings of fact as presented in the staff report.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Applicant, could you state your name and where you're from?
Uh, my name's Dave Henrich, I'm from Laconia. And I'm developing this project.
Okay. And can you, I guess, it pretty much, you're just gonna convert to a condominium?
Just converting the existing to, from residential to condo.
Okay. So I guess at this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing.
Sure.
So at seven twenty-four, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Anybody for or against this project? Come on up. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at seven twenty-four. And we'll have the staff report.
Yep, so, uh, the findings of fact are, the application is complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. The planning board approved the multifamily site plan for the property at its October first, twenty twenty-four meeting. And the application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at its October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting. Their comments have been incorporated in the recommended conditions of approval, which are, four final plan sets and a Mylar plan must be submitted to, reviewed and approved by the planning department. The Mylar plan and notice of action must be recorded at the Belknap County Register of Deeds at the applicant's expense. Condominium documents must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. These documents must describe the division of ownership and responsibility for all applicable common areas, utilities and services, including water, sewer, fire and solid waste. These documents must be recorded at the Belknap County Register of Deeds at the applicant's expense. The addresses for all units must be updated by the Department of Public Works to ensure compliance with RSA two thirty-one, one thirty-three and one thirty-three dash A. A nine-one-one addressing plan must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. The project and all associated conditions must be completed by no later than November third, twenty thirty-two. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application filed with the Laconia Planning Department by the completion date, this approval is null and void. All previous conditions from the October first, twenty twenty-four, planning board approval, which are not altered by this approval, remain in effect.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any discussion? I guess I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve application PB two zero two six dash zero one six at fifty-five Lake Street with the conditions of the approval presented by the staff report.
Second? All in favor?
Perfect. Awesome.
You're all set? Thank you. Next up is a zoning amendment.
Do we want to move from, move the conceptual up?
Sure. So we're gonna move up, so a presentation we have PB two zero dash two six dash zero one nine, eight two seven, Main Street. Conceptual review of a one thirty-eight unit mixed-use development. Is the applicant present?
I am. Uh, my, for the record, my name is Glenn Ritter. I'm here representing, uh, the current owners of eight twenty-seven North Main Street, uh, LLC, and also the American Legion. We have a couple of folks from the Legion here as well. I have a couple of copies of it, I don't know if, uh, anybody, everybody else has a copy? Great. Pass them around. All right, great.
Gotcha.
We just have, uh, you know, we came up with an idea and we wanna run it by the board and see how feasible it, or, you know, what your thoughts are. I'm really here more to get an idea of what your thoughts are. Uh, I wanna see if this works financially. Um, and if it does, then great, you know, we'll go ahead and, and start, you know, doing some engineering, um, and speaking a little more to the architects. But I'm kinda here to see your thoughts. Um, it's gonna come down monetarily for me to see if it makes sense, uh, to put these mon- money units in. Um, so what we're proposing here is three buildings. I, on the second sheet, I kinda give you an idea. Um, the upper building is one that I did, uh, in Stratford County last year of a podium-style building. So we put the podiums and the four levels above it. Below is something maybe, you know, something we'd be looking at. Um, so it's a, be a five-story building, three buildings. And, uh, we'd have retail, we'd have three retails in each building with some parking in the rear. Uh, currently, right now, the total parking spots is one thirty-eight and we're looking, we're looking at a hundred thirty-eight units. So, uh, there's nine, uh, retail locations with fifty, uh, fifty-five parking spaces in the front. It would kinda have a, the way we're proposing it now is kinda having a, a one-way drive-in with angled parking spots. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's kinda, we'd be doing, putting a Legion building somewhere in the back, we'd be discussing. Uh, we currently have twenty-seven spots for them right now, which they're gonna require forty spots. So I'll have to figure that out and, but we're, you know, we're thinking about the building either there or possibly somewhere off of Jackson Street, uh, to put their new building. So that, we're working that out with them right now. And again, it's all theoretical, so I wanna kinda see what your thoughts were for, you know, zoning and what we would need to do and kinda throwing, throwing it back to you guys to see what your thoughts are, to see if this is something that the, the city would like.
Do I have a conflict of interest if I belong to the Legion?
You're not gonna make money out of it, are you?
I don't think so. I guess, so you're looking at probably five stories.
Five stories, yep, and seeing if that, that should be in the zoning, but I wanted to double-check with you, uh, to make sure that is. Um, and the density too, uh, what, there's one parking spot. You know, parking's gonna be the tough thing for this. And we kinda kept the one plus the extra for the retail right now. So that's where we came up with our, our, our one thirty-eight. And, yeah.
Questions from the board? Thoughts? I just want clarification just from myself.
Yes.
This, this property right here, the, to the south of where you're proposing to develop, is that where they're currently, there's a restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yep, exactly. Yeah, the Thai restaurant. And, yeah, across from the fire station.
Uh, the residential units, market rate, thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's right now, we, you know, I'd like to try it at market rate, um, instead of doing, uh, you know, the lower income. Um, though I'd be up for looking at both of those options as well. Uh, so that's kinda what we're thinking about. Mostly one and two bedroom units.
It appears to be nothing but parking spaces in the building.
Oh, so the back of the building, the front of the building is, you got the three residential units. And there's a one entry for each, they'll probably have an elevator in it. And the back would have the parking spots in the back of the podium. But then you'll have the residential units on top of that. So that's kinda like just the first floor layout.
The, the parking in the front along the road, is, is there a separation? Like, that's not gonna be a five-hundred-foot-long driveway?
Uh, you mean as far as, uh, there'll be sidewalk, then a driving location, then parking, and then a walkway, you know, underneath some kind of awning, uh, for the building?
Where, where do we enter in the property from the road? That, I don't see that at all.
Good point. So, uh, it'd be up at the top of, uh, you know, the top of the page there. We'll have to move the building slightly, cause this doesn't give us enough access up there. So we'll have the access up there as well as access off of Jackson Street. She'll have two, two areas of access. Way we have it now. And again, I'd be up for any suggestions.
So I'm assuming along that sidewalk there, you would probably have some kind of a delineator between the sidewalk in, in your parking lot? So it wasn't just all pavement from right off the street into the, into there?
Yes, we can look at that. I haven't gone that far in, but yeah, we can look at a, you know, a couple of feet of, you know, grass or trees or what have you. Uh, I'd be up for looking at that for sure. You're looking at aesthetics.
Definitely maybe a, some kind of a, uh, a visual break or, right there. And possibly, you know, yeah, some shrubbery or trees or whatever.
Yes.
You're talking on the front of the building so that vehicles wouldn't be backing into...
Exactly. Out into the street.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the first thing that I see of...
Yep, no, that makes sense. We would, we would probably propose something like that once we get into more of the details. It's just kind of a rough thing. We had, again, I don't wanna spend too much money on the design, because in case it's not anything the board's looking for, then, then, you know, I don't wanna sit on my wheels and spend my money. So I'm kinda here first and that, and then I'd get you something. You know, if you think the density is okay and, and the project is viable, then I would, uh, get some engineering and then we can go over details like that. And, and, and yes, there would definitely be something like that.
If I, if I may, I, I just wanna, I think that this gentleman's looking for all the feedback you can provide to them before, so before he goes out and spends a, a lot of money on everything.
Exactly.
Um, when he, when he comes back, he's not re-engineering everything that we, that we've already said. So I think if you're looking for, uh, more green space, you're looking for landscaping, you're looking for X, Y or Z. He's looking for that honest feedback of what you like and what you don't like right now, so he can...
I, I will tell you that from some of the other projects that have come before us, I've had some, I don't, I don't wanna say complaints, but some concerns with limited green space. And I know you're right next to the park.
Yeah.
But there's a, there's a whole green space, I mean, if, it's pretty important to a lot of people.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be a concern. Question that I had where it goes on and on, uh, it looks like you have an entrance and an exit onto Jackson Street. Is that where the current swim club?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, it's a swim club which should be taken down.
The people on Jackson Street are, are accustomed to vehicles entering and, and leaving that parking area now?
Yes, so, yeah, it's kinda, entries are kinda where they are now, um, in most part. Yep.
And I know this is probably putting the cat before the horse, but what do you propose the front of the, these buildings looking like?
Yeah, and I kinda, on the second page here, um, I kinda put a quick, um, rendering together of something that'd be somewhat similar. Um, you know, we'd have some outcroppings, different things. I, I don't know quite yet. Um, sometimes I leave that to the architects to come up and I tell them this is what we're looking for. But I, I would start with that as something that, you know, that building's a little bit longer and, you know, than the buildings we proposed, but something that looks like that. With a little bit more on the first floor too, you'll, you'd have some more of a curtain wall for the retail spaces. You know, whether, you know, would they have a little restaurant in there, you know, or what have you. So the, I'd say the front, the bottoms would look a little different. We'd have more curtain wall for ret- for retail units on the bottom.
Go ahead. Um, I, I, so maybe I have to recuse myself as in a butter?
Oh, okay.
On Parks and Rec?
Oh, oh, okay, Parks and Rec, okay.
So technically, I'm in a butter?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, it's really, really high.
Yes, yes.
I understand you're allowed to go five stories. I mean, you've got this gorgeous park and then height. I, I, I think that the bottom picture is gorgeous, I, I think that's a, that's a lovely picture of a building. And I'm not opposed to it, I just, I, I personally have a little concern with the height.
Yeah, so we looked at doing it one level lower, and, and to be quite honest with you, it wasn't financially feasible to have four levels for us. So, that's why we, we did the fifth. We've done these buildings before and, uh, and yeah, there's a difference. And, in order to get the parking, so we, you know, we'd only have at that point, you know, three levels of the residential, and it wouldn't quite work for us. Anyway, yeah, so I understand, but, uh, thank you for, you know, saying, mentioning that, 'cause I'm sure you may not be the only one.
Uh, Glenn?
Yes.
Just, you know, you're proposing a hundred and forty units. And if the park wasn't there, there's, you have nothing, there's, there's no gazebo where people would hang out, I mean, where kids would play, things like that.
Right.
It's a lot of units.
Yes, it's a lot of units.
And there, you have, I, I don't see anything provided for those, you know.
What made me think this was a good idea to, to take down the gym and work with the American Legion is because the park was there. And then it was, you know, we'd have all this, this space to work with the buildings. I, I do appreciate the concern with putting the, some, some greenery and stuff in the front of the building, and I would, we would definitely do that anyway. But, parking is the big problem for us, and I wish there was a way, I mean, you guys, as it is, are down to one spot per unit, which is as, as good and as tight as I could ask for. But, um, yeah, I mean, I don't know, we, we could put some different things in different areas, there's, there's parts, again, it's not totally designed how I would, you know, I, most ideally, there's some open areas and maybe we can talk about doing a few little things, um, right now, but... So, I understand the concern though, as far as, uh...
Would be a very tough area to, also for snow removal, and you gotta think about where you're gonna put dumpsters.
During the construction? Oh, oh, in general?
Just in general, that's...
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point, we don't have that on here.
You know, I, I would envision all that snow is gonna have to go somewhere else after a storm.
Yes, and we could probably talk about, uh, that's a great point, and we could talk about distributing that snow. Uh, we've done that before in other projects where, where we, we move that every time. The trash is a really good one too.
Wouldn't be long you have a really big pile of snow there.
Yeah.
Depending on which way the runoff goes.
Yeah.
Nope, that's a great point, yep, we can work on that, that's not a, that's not a showstopper.
What are your plans to mask housing along Jefferson?
To mask the housing? Um, well, we put up construction fence during construction, of course, and we'll put the scrim on. So, that's, that's what we do, yeah, as, yeah, right now. I mean, we could talk about providing any fencing, there's some fencing there now, but we can, you know, we can talk about doing some kind of fencing along them for the butters, long-term for permanent. That would be a fair add. All good points. This is good, this is good, this all helps me kinda put things into costs and consideration to make sure that it's something we could do or couldn't do. Most of everything so far seems pretty reasonable though.
I, I do, uh, if you don't mind me adding, um, I do think, since you've got some single families and, and the mix is down there, you're probably gonna have to provide buffers along the parking areas
Yeah.
for those residential units that are already there, pre-existing.
Yeah.
Um, and I think as you'd be using performance zoning CUP, so you also are gonna need to do some, a buffer along Jackson Street with the parking there, uh, whether that's landscaping or, or fencing.
Mm-hmm, good. Yes, we can definitely look at that, good.
You know, like the, the house on Lot thirty-seven, you got like tens of parking spaces aiming right at his house. And, you know, people get upset with the headlights and...
Sure. Yeah, and, and if, if the boards, you know, we can do things like eight-foot fences instead, if you guys will approve that, just to keep it up for them, I know traditionally you have to get special approvals for eight-footers, but, um, we could do something like that, or, you know, what, whatever anybody thinks and what the neighbors might think, not... These are good, that's a good point, these are all things we gotta look at. Yeah, these are the kinda things I wanna hear about.
Uh, do I understand there's only one way in, or two ways? One off of, uh, the backside and one off the front? So, if you come in off of North Main Street, you, and you wanna get to someone on the backside of one of these buildings, you have to drive all the way down and back?
Yeah, you'd, you'd have to right now go through North Main and just, and travel down to where you need to go. Um, I'd like to make that a two-way, if we can, you know, it doesn't show enough space there right now, but we can make that happen. So, you can go, you know, you don't, so, travel all the way through, to your point, so we can have two ins and outs spaces.
So, you would come in and out, but you can go past, uh, up, up by the park? You can go past the building there and come down? There'll be space up there?
Yes, exactly, between the park and the first, in that building. Yeah, we'd have spaces right there.
And that's how the Legion would gain access to there?
Yes, and they could also gain access from the other one, but yes.
And I assume since the Legion is here, they are in favor?
They are, I'm representing them right now. Yeah, they're definitely interested, uh, because we would work with them on getting a new building, um, for the, for the, for the space to allow this project to happen. Uh, without them, this project wouldn't happen. So, um, it wouldn't work out financially if we just use the eight twenty-seven North Main.
So, um, I, I think that, uh, Amy's got a concern, she's Parks and Rec, and we do host Fourth of July celebrations right there at the park, we set off fireworks. And there is a, uh, a safety requirement for radius, uh, between buildings.
I don't know it off the top of my head, we go...
And I think it's three hundred feet, uh, from the next inhabited structure. And I think that with the track right there, I think it would just be worth making a, a measurement there to see if it's out of the explosive arc of the proposed fireworks, uh, launching area.
Fireworks are off the point though, aren't they?
No, they're out of the mid, middle of the track.
Really?
Yeah.
Um, another thing, uh, just while I'm...
Welcome.
Just while I'm already on that.
Be on the point.
Yes, they did.
It might be worth reaching out to, uh, Lou Luttrell down in the fire department and talking about the fire appar, fire apparatus and their turning radius.
Yes.
Um, I think that that might be a concern, especially given the proximity to the, the parks. And then they might... It's just a conceptual, I totally get that. So, we're just looking for feedback. But having probably two lane in the front there to allow fire apparatus, uh, apparatus or emergency response, uh, in case of an emergency at a retail facility or residential facility, uh, without blocking all of the traffic is probably, uh, worth looking into.
Nope, those are great points, we definitely need to do that and see what the...
The other question I would, I would look at is, you're gonna need to do a traffic study because of the number of units.
Yep, okay.
And looking at Jackson Street, um, I think that's a little bit of a smaller street, uh, just what the impact of that increased traffic flow is gonna bring to that.
So, it's a one-way, correct?
I think it is.
It's one-way?
I think it is one-way. I can't recall off the top, I had, uh, um, actually, the, the whole street is one-way, isn't it?
It is one-way, it goes from the middle school to Oak.
Um, so it's, it's worth looking at. On the city's website as well, um, the State School Project did a traffic study, and that's posted on our website as well, and it has the traffic counts on there for this area. They have, uh, the rating of the road already identified. So, it might be worth giving that data to your traffic engineer to see how this is gonna impact the rating of Oak Street and, uh, and Main.
Okay. Nope, great. Great.
Also, I know it's not, uh, state law to change concerning the parking requirement. And parking, parking is, is very tight, you have exactly one spot per unit. Well, that, that is what state law says, I would, I would strongly suggest that you might want to have... I know, you, you're, you've got a tight area you're working with here.
Yeah.
It's having some sort of extra parking spaces.
Yeah, so right now, the only extra is a fifty-five for the retail, which people would park in.
There's always guests showing up, and if you got one, two-bedroom units and you've only got one parking spot, uh, you might run into some marketing issues if you build it.
Yes.
Then another, another question just for you, or, or food for thought, is, uh, what price point you're looking at for these? Um, and if there'd be any, uh, any flexibility to, uh, to kinda go along some, more of the continuum to allow for more access to some of these units to, uh, residents?
Yep. Yeah, we can look at that for sure. I don't know what's, how's the city feels about that, obviously. You, you, you're getting, you have to, you have a need to do that, um, and through the state and what have you.
Yeah, there, there's a whole, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we make anything a requirement or anything like that.
No, right.
Residents, there's a perception that we only approve luxury
Yes.
living units.
Yes.
And, uh, it would be beneficial if we had somebody come in that wasn't proposing a hundred percent luxury.
I'm, I'm not objected to, uh, you know, opposed to that. Uh, is there a percentage, I think, or is there something you guys usually work with, or?
Um, I think the board has been pretty receptive to, uh, negotiating with developers out there. I think, um, the last larger project that came in, um, off of Union Ave, I think they did...
Off Union Ave?
Yep, with the old, uh, next to T-bones there.
Oh, uh, they did, well, they did twenty percent, but we have seen some developments do, uh, ten percent as well.
Yep. And I, I think the board is receptive probably of some of that flexibility, not locking into an exact number, knowing that, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables that come into play with that.
What, what are your thoughts too on, you know, neighbors and, and what, what the public would feel about? 'Cause it is a good amount of units, um, near the park, across from the fire station. What do you feel like the, the town would like or not like? Am I, we gonna get some opposition? I know we're, we're doing things within the regulations as far as what we're allowed, but I also don't wanna, you know, come up against a, a brick wall, like, you know, this, this isn't gonna work. Have you, what, what has you seen in the town, uh, in, in recent past?
I think you're gonna have some problems. Uh, I think, for starters, the, the one-way street behind the projects, I mean, your people are gonna be using those, and then going right by the school.
Yeah.
So, you'll, you'll probably get a lot of concern about kids walking and, you know, cars parked and whatever, in that area, and then, you know, just just the, the standard concern that folks have when you propose something different. That was, uh...
Yes, yeah.
Primarily considered a residential area. You know, and, and you had a, a gym and a pool.
Right.
Now, all of a sudden, you're gonna have five-story buildings. I, I would almost guarantee you, it'd be, I'd be fun to come back and watch, that somebody's gonna stand up and say it's too high.
Too high, yeah. Yes.
But I understand your point of it being economically required.
Right.
Uh, but I think you should look at it and just be prepared for that argument.
Yes.
The nicer you make the front of that building look...
The better, yes, the more people are gonna like it, that's, I find that all the time when we do the project.
The other thing I would tell you is, a couple of folks here have made comments about the driveway in the front. You want that to look nice. You know, if somebody mentioned shrubberies and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I'm here to tell you that's gonna be a necessity.
Yep, yep.
And finally, great, you need to work with the park.
Yes, okay, what would be, yeah, what would be the park's concerns? You know, we have you on the, on, uh, or, fireworks is a great one. Yes, well, true. Okay, yeah, right, of course.
I mean, I, I just thought of the fireworks off the top of my head, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, I have... I, I'm not exactly sure yet what the, what the concerns would be, I'd have to actually...
Yeah, we'd have maybe...
Sit down and talk with you and maybe just
Great.
really let this, let this, the size of it, 'cause right here, this looks like nothing.
Yes.
I mean, this is piddly.
No, yeah, no.
And I'm like, well, I can handle it, you know?
Yeah, you don't know.
But then I look at this going, oh my god, I don't know. But, I, I'm, I'm interested, I think it's lovely. What would you, my, one of my main concerns is parking, and it's yours as well. But, if you have one per spot, that, you know where they're going to park, right?
And, you know, yes, maybe the park. Yeah, that's a great spot, that's a great point.
We don't allow overnight parking, and I don't wanna have to tow people all the time. You know what I mean? It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the police department, it's not fair to the parks department.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll also go to the middle school and try to park there. You know what I mean? So, these are, these are both areas that they think it's public, right? I can, I can have my friends over, it's all's well. But that's not necessarily the case, yes, they are parks and they are, uh, schools, but they are not meant for residential overflow parking.
Right. No, I, I see that concern, that's, parking's gonna be the city's biggest concern and mine as well.
What would be your thought of making one of them underneath be parking?
All parking underneath?
Instead of a residential, or, instead of the, um...
Retail?
Retail?
Yeah.
Making one of them have parking underneath?
As much, yeah, I mean, that would add, but it wouldn't add so, so much. I mean, maybe it would add another, yeah, no, that would add a good amount of spots.
I, I'm ju, I'm just throwing out ideas, I don't know if it would work. And I don't know if it would feasibly work for you financially.
Yeah, that's a great, I, I'll, I'll put that in consideration, think about it, maybe run some numbers on that. But, yeah, it wouldn't be...
We'll put the Legion on stilts.
Put the Legion on stilts, I know. Could do that too.
Working down the wall.
I've already mentioned underground parking on all three buildings.
Yeah. I know, but, I mean, if you do underground, it's gonna be, that's, that's a way more, you know, monetarily. And the water was brought up too. The water table, we'd have to put some pilings down there, that's, it's, that's out of the... Well, we, we thought about keeping the pool as a, an option for the residents, but, um...
We use space on top of the building.
Yeah, you could, we can, we've done that in the past.
They do do that.
Forgive my obvious ignorance, the, the little space between the first, second, and second and third, what is that opening?
Yeah, uh, in the, in the upper parts, where cars can come in and out, but actually in between where the retail units are, we could do something, I know, I'd probably put, you know, trees or put something in those spots, but...
Uh, no, I was wondering if you could move them a little closer together, give yourself more room at the upper end, but maybe also provide a second entrance on the south end? Just look and see.
Yeah, I, I like that idea.
Look and see.
We, we kept them a little separate just for construction purposes, but if we can pull that off and put them closer together and have a, another entrance on Main Street, I, I like that idea.
I, I think it'll work better for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would flow, I think, a lot better.
And I think you could then close off, once everything's done, you could close off, uh, the back street.
Yeah, on Jackson?
Yeah.
It seems to be raining.
I'm, I'm definitely gonna look into that, that's a good one. Yeah, you, would the city prefer that, and then have it on Jackson Street, or maybe all three? I don't know, we can talk about that later.
I, I think it's worth at least looking at, 'cause I think that with the school getting out and having this access right here, that, that area can historically get very bad, especially at whenever that, around that three o'clock time when the school's out.
Yep.
You have all them school buses and parents picking up and, uh...
And, and that's where your concerns are gonna come from?
Yes, that's, yes, that's right, those, that's where oftentimes are what's, break the project, is the outside concerns.
We also like to use that area as a cut-through? Parents leaving middle school, coming through that and come out onto the, onto North Main Street.
That's good, I didn't notice, I didn't know that. I was in there on that.
And it might be, it might be worth, if you decide to go forward with this,
Yep.
kinda taking some of the feedback that we've done tonight and just coming back...
Again.
Again, just, uh...
Yeah, great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to iron it out, I mean...
Great.
I, I'm not trying to, you know, um, but at least have...
Oh, this is all really good feedback.
We can maybe think some more.
Yep.
And give some more ideas too, so...
Yeah, and have Rob or somebody send me an email saying this is where our thoughts are, maybe in the next few weeks, uh, that would be great. Yeah, the only, I think, uh, you know, I've got time, I think time is the essence for the folks at the Legion, 'cause they have, they wanna know what they're doing, whether they're upgrading their existing building or doing something with us. So, uh, that's, that's the only thing, I think, time-wise, but I have time to go over and do things.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, next up is the zoning amendment rewrite of impact fee ordinance and adoption of justification study.
So, um, I'm just, I'm gonna let Tyler present this, this evening. He said he is absolutely sick of me just getting... He said he is absolutely sick of me just giving him chicken ordinances to do. So with that, he is gonna do this one.
Yeah, you got it from there.
Cool. What was that? I'm sorry.
Can we have a month to read this?
A month?
A month?
Oh, oh, oh.
It's, it's still the same one that you guys received back in September.
Yeah, it's the, it's the same study.
So nothing's changed since then. It's just, it was the last public hearing, so we've.
We weren't gonna actually print it, but, uh, so we did a little reorg in the planning department and, um,
It accidentally got printed again this time around, so it's.
Rob forgot to say, hey, don't print that, and, um, we printed that, so that's my fault.
But it says the exact same thing it did, uh, when we received it back in September, so, um, essentially tonight, this is our second public hearing for regarding impact fees, impact fees here at Planning Board. Um, it will have another, at least one other public hearing at, at City Council. Uh, but tonight, uh, we have provided you all with proposed language. Um, both of them say the exact same thing, both, both proposals, except for one is a twenty-five percent initial rate. The other one is a fifty percent initial rate. And we've also provided you with, uh, the fee option tables that show, um, the current fee rates and then, uh, what the difference is depending on if we go to the twenty-five or the fifty percent, uh, initial rate. Um, and then with that, Rob just passed out another, uh, chart, as if he didn't have enough charts to look at. But this one actually shows the impact fees, um, in relation to development cost. So you'll see here on the far left column that, uh, those are the, we just picked prices for a single-family home and it ranges from five hundred all the way up to eight hundred thousand dollars. And then you'll see that the next, uh, column over represents the percentage of the current impact fee as a percentage of the housing cost. So at a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, uh, cost for a single-family home, let's just say, our current impact fee rate is only point seven six percent of that total cost of the home. If we increased it to twenty-five percent, uh, to the twenty-five percent initial rate here that, that we've proposed, that would increase to point nine seven percent, so not even a one percent of the total house cost would be the impact fee. And then if, uh, the board decided they wanted to go up to fifty percent, uh, that would increase to one point nine three percent. So not even two percent of the total house, uh, cost. Um, and you'll see that, uh, obviously as the house gets more and more expensive, uh, those percentages get lower and lower and lower as relation to, uh, the house.
Let me ask a question about the percentages is, what's our current percentage that we're using? Like somewhere around fifteen percent?
So our current impact fee rate is at fifty percent of the number that was recommended back in two thousand and nine. So for a single-family detached home, right now, we collect three thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents per dwelling unit.
And no matter the cost of the home?
No matter the cost of the home.
But, but these are broken down into.
No, no, so this is just a compare, this is just showing, uh, what that, what the impact fee would look like as a percentage of the cost of the home.
So the impact fee, the twenty-five percent, say, proposed twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of what? What was recommended back in oh-nine?
No, twenty-five percent of what's recommended in the final report. So, um, the initial summary in that final report.
Right.
Shows what the, um, recommended costs are, or impact fees are. Um, basically to, for the city to expand and upgrade its services for increased development in the city.
So what they recommend, we raise it to.
Right, so what we have proposed, because that is a significant increase all at once, is we've kinda given you both, you all two options to consider. Um, twenty-five percent of the recommended, uh, I say recommended, it's all based off of what departments have submitted for their future capital expenditures, um, and projected future growth of the city. Uh, twenty-five percent of a single-family detached, uh, impact fee rate now, uh, would be four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-three cents, which is a, just a little bit over a thousand dollar increase from our current fee. So that's twenty-five percent of the, um, what it costs.
They recommended.
Correct, correct. And then the fifty percent is, is half of that, obviously.
Because, you know, with the state school coming, there's so much money to be had that we're gonna let slip through our fingers. Um, like this White Oaks one, they were paying an impact fee of eighteen hundred thirty dollars. It sounds cheap, eighteen hundred dollars.
It is. Our, let me just say this, as one who sees the budget a little more detail. Uh, and you may have noticed that someone's been talking about fixing roads. That's the least of our problems, but, well, maybe not the least, but it's one of the list of problems. I don't know what number we're ultimately gonna pick, but we need to pick one that starts to bring in infrastructure money. And, and, and cost for equipment and other things that these developments are. This gentleman who's just here, he's bringing a bunch of people into the city that are gonna mean how many firemen we need, how many police we need, how much more public works we need. And, uh, and what, somebody said the, the traffic impact. You know, what are we gonna have to do with the roads? Not just when they build, but over the next, you know, up to the up years. So I mean, I think we have to, I'm, I'm tended to agree with these, with what he's saying.
So just to put it in perspective, if I just did for, um, um, the two-unit structures, um, or for townhome type styles, our current impact fee for the state school, we'd only collect three point eight million dollars. With these, with this new study, we would be collecting at least twelve million dollars.
That's, that's a twenty-five percent?
That's at fifty percent.
Okay.
So that's paying for a lot of your infrastructure. That's shifting the burden from the resident, from the taxpayer to the developer.
And the impact on Elm Street and North Main Street is gonna be horrendous. The, the, the traffic study, which they didn't propose when they came in with the, you know, the fancy stuff, that thing is huge.
Yep.
And, and it's huge, and as you go through it, you get more and more lost, which is what they're hoping for. Because the bottom line is Elm Street with a school on it is gonna need a lot of help.
Yep.
North Main Street that does this is gonna need a lot of help.
Yep.
And we can't afford to do it with the present tax rate. Just by the way, Laconia has the, the second lowest tax rate of any city of the thirteen cities in the state. And in the city of Laconia, if you average the, the tax rate in this county, we're sixty-eight cents higher than, than the average. We got a county courthouse, a county jail, a county house of correction, a county home, and, uh, like, we're doing, uh, mental health and all these other things that demand our services and don't pay any taxes. So what he's suggesting, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not gonna be around to worry about any of this stuff. Uh, well, let's be fair.
Get ready to kick the bucket?
Yeah.
I hope not.
Oh, my god.
I gotta live in these twenty-five year.
Just not planning board, that's a lot of paperwork, um.
Uh, you may have noticed in the paper that a number of people have pointed out I'm too old to be doing anything, so, uh, that's why I say I won't be around my phone.
They got a defibrillator down the stairs.
I, I know how to use it.
Me too.
Listen, for this member.
Fifty percent.
Let's propose to the council fifty percent. I would suggest to you that you get this to the council to be handed out next Monday. Don't ask for anything, just say, here it is, would you read this? Let us know what your thoughts are, blah, 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 blah. I, I guess we have to publish it.
Yeah, so what we'll do is, uh, we've already talked with Nancy, uh, we're already in preparation of getting this on your agenda in anticipation. You guys will make a recommendation. Uh, so it'll go to your next city council meeting, uh, at which point, uh, we will schedule for a public hearing.
Subsequently.
Correct, yep.
We, we, and we're kinda thinking to do the public hearing after the Thanksgiving break, so there'd be a little bit more time for absorption and digestion.
Uh, you know, one of the points I made, I'm sorry to politic here, but one of the points I made at, at the forum the other night was, all these people are bitching and pissing and moaning about our taxes and our this, that. And the next thing, here we sit, how many people are at the forum, at the, at the microphone?
And, and we did publish this in the newspaper, and this is the second time. We have been, I, I'm not gonna use the T-word, but we have been very open with everything and trying to get it out there to the public.
I'll use it transparent. At the end of the day though, they ain't standing there, they're just bitching about it up at, uh, the NASWA or something with a beer in the hand.
Well, in reality, this, this increase isn't gonna affect the average homeowner.
Right.
They're gonna roll this right into the cost and, and.
And I, and I don't disagree, I think we should recommend the fifty percent, but I also think that people are gonna say, housing right now is so unaffordable to your, your starter, people starting out, and to what you just said, this, these numbers are gonna get rolled over into the price. So it, that, that developer's not gonna take this hit, it's the, it's the buyer that's gonna, and people are gonna criticize us for doing that, but.
I'm sorry.
But I think the fifty percent is the way to go. I think we should present the fifty percent to, to the council.
I think you can also look for some sort of formula, be ready to present a formula that shows if they're under a certain amount of money, they get a, a better break. Cause those are the entering the market people.
Do we?
Like the small houses up on Prescott Hill right now. You know, houses like that, instead of fifty percent?
Yeah.
We could do that, I think that would go a long ways.
I don't, I don't know if we can.
I don't know.
Can we do that? Can we, we can't mix the impact fee, right?
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's either twenty-five percent or fifty. We can't have.
We, we could, we could send both, but what I was thinking about is like.
No, they wanna do fifty, but then for a, a single-family home.
Like a lower cost home.
I, I know, and that's what, but I was just talking to Tyler about, if we decided to, and I, I think it would be within our power to rewrite in the, in the ordinance, if you had a certain price point, if you were a target at a price point, do you have a, a reduction in impact fees? Is that what kinda what you're looking for?
For that young couple that's trying to get out of that renting scheme and into their first home, because we know that this is just gonna get passed on to them.
So we, we could do that, we would just have to rewrite to add a section in for that, uh, so that we'd have to come back next month for Planning Board again.
No, no, no.
I, I don't think you're right. I, if, I think if you, if you talk about, um, I'm trying to think the name. The state has, uh, a set amount for wages, below which you, uh.
Oh, we, we do have a provision in there already for workforce housing that you could, it would be exempt up to a maximum of twenty percent of the development.
Right.
We, we have that as a standard in there.
Well, that's a good start. Could you increase the percentage?
But you could, and we could increase the percentage. Um, I don't think the, increasing the percentage would be a material change to the.
As long as Planning Board approved it tonight, they would still have to have another public hearing at City Council. So if we noticed it as if we noticed for Planning Board, for that City Council public hearing, we should be okay. So in other words, we'd have to treat it as if it was a planning.
Another, so as long as they noticed it ten days prior.
Well, you still wanna do this after Thanksgiving, so you got plenty of time.
So we got, we do have plenty of time. We do have plenty of time.
So what percentage would you guys recommend for workforce housing? Cause right now it's at twenty percent of the total units proposed shall be exempt.
Or do we hold it right there?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
If we hold it right there, we don't have to do.
Yeah, if we hold it right there, we're, we're good.
We can send it forward tonight and with the fif- at the fifty percent and we're.
What do you think?
We're.
You know, we, we gotta move on this.
It, it certainly says to people we're trying.
Correct. And, um, you know, if, if we move this forward tonight and then three months from now, we decide we want to add in a provision to.
Increase it.
Increase this or to amend this to, uh, allow for like a price point, uh, deviation, then we could still add that in as an amendment to this original, original proposal.
Yeah, I would, I don't know what to do if we have to make a motion, how, how would we?
Um, do we, do you know how the council would feel about a fifty percent?
Well, I can tell you from sitting next to Eric Hoffman, it's a sip, so he is all in favor of fifty percent.
Okay.
Cause we've talked at length.
The only thing I would tell you is this, um, I think they've, they're starting to worry about blowback, about costs and stuff. But I honestly believe regardless of what happens tomorrow, that council is the one that you have the best chance with.
Right. No, I, I, I understand that.
They may all still be there, January one, but if there's some changes, it could create problems.
And I will say that was why we presented this additional chart too, just to show you what that is in relation to the actual cost, so, you know.
The sad thing is, you know, going back to the, the price point, giving them a break, there is no developer in Laconia building three hundred thousand dollar houses. You can't find anything that aren't six hundred and up. That's just.
Unfortunately, I can't.
The other thing wrong with a price point is, as construction costs go up, the price point. It need, need to change.
Right.
You know, during the forum, we talked about taxes. People don't understand appraisals are done every five years. Your home value is gonna go up, and therefore your taxes are gonna go up. So the more we can add to the tax rolls, the better chance we have of keeping it, which is what Laconia's done. I showed a chart that shows the tax rate for Laconia for the last, I think, twelve years.
Yeah.
And then the tax rate for the county. That my opponent voted for, by the way.
Sorry, sorry, I, I'm sorry. So, yes, so what I would do is I would have somebody make a motion that Planning Board, um, recommends City Council adopt the fifty percent, um, uh, fifty percent rate. Uh, but that I think we can all agree here, uh, as far as the board goes, you're okay with the language in both, whether it's twenty-five or fifty, but you're recommending the fifty, so somewhere along those lines.
And, and subject to, uh, uh, corrections or I don't know what term we wanna use, but, uh, any additions you may put in between now and, I think, you know, you do this with some regularity, you can't think of the, cause I'm old, I forget the.
No, I, I, I don't think, I think we're good for the corrections aspect, since nobody, we're not changing any, any of the numbers. Yeah. We're just sending it forward as it is, so we should be good without any of that. Uh, Legal's already reviewed it. Um, Tyler is an exceptional ordinance writer, and Legal had zero feedback for him. So, um, it is a very well-written ordinance. Probably not.
What are you thinking? The ass, uh, the gentleman is gonna leave, cause he can make more money someplace else, cause you keep bragging about.
Well, you know, uh, uh, he, no, 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 no.
Can't happen, no.
No, no.
I think Concord lost their city plan.
Shut up.
You know the pay grade increase we put through in the middle of last year? What happened was, this didn't work anymore, is it?
Oh, yes, it is.
Is it recording?
Yes.
What happened last year is, I'm talking to the fire chief and he says, a probationary firefighter in Laconia makes a dollar ninety-seven cents an hour less than a probationary firefighter in Sandburn. And I checked, Sandburn does in a year what Laconia does in a month, which is why I said we gotta do something about these base scales. Uh, and, but we can't keep doing it if we don't have some.
Well, this, this, we've shortchanged every city department.
Yeah.
For, since oh-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'll fight hard for this.
I, I think this is, um, I know it's sticker shock for a lot of people, but it's really needed, especially in the current climate of everything.
Yep. So if I could, I'll throw out propose, a proposed motion if somebody wants to jump on that as a first and then a second.
Am I allowed to make a motion?
Yes.
Even though I'm a city.
You're on the planning board.
Okay.
She stands to profit.
I do stand to profit.
You're not gonna get, you're not gonna receive pay from this.
You don't make money on it.
The city receives.
My department does.
Yes, but.
That's not your money.
It's not, it's not mine.
None of this is gonna go towards your paycheck. It's all going towards capital facilities, so. Um, so the proposed motion would be that the board recommends, um, to the City Council that they adopt the proposed language. So the proposed motion would be that the board recommends, um, to the City Council that they adopt the proposed language at fifty percent. But the board, uh, approves of both the twenty-five percent and fifty percent language.
We have to say we approve twenty-five percent?
My only concern is if the board doesn't approve both language, yes, and City Council prefers twenty-five.
Take the fifty percent and be happy.
Yeah.
Show them the twenty-five.
That's why we have to have it.
So, cause otherwise we, we, we have to start all over again.
Start over again, they don't.
Yes, if the, if you're, if you guys do not say that you're okay with either twenty-five or fifty, and you just put fifty forward. If City Council says no, we want the twenty-five, it has to come back to Planning Board for you guys to then approve the language again, so.
And in the meantime, we, more development gets.
Well, we miss out on more money.
Right, right.
And that's why we're recommending the fifty.
Correct.
But.
Would it help if we come to the City Council?
I think it would be beneficial if you showed up to the, uh.
Public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Or you can show up even as, um, and, and as a citizen and speak on item, um.
Items on the.
Item on the agenda, cause it'll still be on the agenda as new business, even if it's not as a public hearing, so.
My recommendation is that the chairman of the, of the Planning Board and the Planning Director or his assistant, come up to the microphone.
We don't have a chairman.
He's sitting right there.
Yeah, it's the vice chairman.
We will be there.
Yes, we will absolutely be there.
I, don't, don't leave it, uh, read this and vote.
We will be there.
We'll be there, and, uh, we'll.
We'll do a presentation on it and explain, answer any questions.
Yep, uh, probably our, our next big question is, is how much in detail should we go into in the study, or should we just leave it, or we just do?
I don't think they need a lot of detail.
As you know from having reviewed this study, we provided it to you earlier.
Gotcha.
You got it.
Cool.
You got it.
That's what we politicians do.
You got it.
And you know what, if you want, we can leave these behind so you don't have to print new, right?
If you wanna leave it, I will.
This is, these are the same ones that we got.
Yes.
Two months ago.
Yeah, but it's still the same final report.
Yeah, that's fine.
And it, it cost us money to do this study, I'm assuming.
It cost us forty-five thousand dollars to do this study.
You know, the study says we should be charging this, and we're only wanting to charge fifty percent, which, like, we're giving them a bargain.
Really has to be driven home.
Yep.
If they say, oh, why do I get a hundred percent?
City Council wants to do a hundred percent, they certainly can, they just have to come back, uh.
Can I explain these aren't double-sided?
Why say paper?
It could have been that the setting, we have been having troubles with the printer.
IT needs some update and remapping of printers, and I'll tell you, um.
I don't wanna hear excuses, next time.
Hey, if we have increased impact fees, we'll make sure that they're. So with that, just to go over the motion, would you guys be comfortable sending both? Just in case City Council decides they don't wanna go all the way up to the full fifty?
I, I don't think we should give them the option.
If we don't give them the option and they say no, then we're reinventing the whole wheel. If, if, ideally, the best thing was they'd say yes to the fifty, but if they say no to the fifty, we're right back to square one.
At least we've got the twenty-five going.
Yes, correct, and we can, in the staff report, at, we will absolutely put in there that Planning Board recommends the fifty percent.
I'd like to keep both.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my, that's just, I don't wanna see this fail.
Or drag out.
Or drag out, yes.
So the proposed motion would be that the board approve, uh, uh, recommends both sets of languages at the twenty-five and fifty. But highly strongly recommends the City Council adopt at the fifty percent.
I'll make that motion.
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion, uh, in favor?
I'll have it.
Perfect.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
Cause I have to do it.
Uh, beautiful, there is one more thing on the agenda, real quick here.
This is for short-term lodging, uh, we had amended the ordinance, um, it took us so long to update. Get through Planning Board, and then by the time we got to City Council, uh, state law had changed and said that we are no longer allowed to regulate. Occupancy limits for single-family, uh, dwelling units, so, uh, Legal suggested we bring it back here, as opposed to continue moving it forward. So we have removed the one item, uh, item D under section three. The maximum, maximum occupancy limit of short-term lodging unit is two persons per bedroom or sixteen persons total, whichever is fewer. So legally, we're, we can't do that, so we had a line through that.
That is ridiculous.
Yep.
But I understand our hands are tied because the state's mandating this.
Somebody could have sixteen people in a three-bedroom house?
Sixty people.
Yep. Now you can have sixty people.
How, how?
State zoning.
That is, uh, the state meddling and local zoning and the state reps, uh.
That's the free staters, gentlemen and ladies.
So, uh, so we are no longer allowed to regulate that.
Yeah, so unfortunately our hands are tied.
So we just revoke somebody's license.
Yep. Yep.
Yep. On Lewis Street to, because they're advertising ten units, we only said you're going to have six.
Yep.
But that's a moot point now.
Yep.
Hating that happens.
That's, that's gonna, I mean, so many people that when they, when that makes the paper, there are gonna be a lot of people that are just scratching their head, saying, how can this be?
There's no difference, there's no.
And that, and I, I hate the state's philosophy of the one-size-fits-all, and that's what they're applying to everybody, and, um, it doesn't work. Um, so we just need a, you wanna do a, we just need a motion to.
Is there any way we could put health safety?
Uh, life safety regulations still apply, so the state law does allow that. Um, so anything that's in life safety code would still apply.
Maybe you take an extra minute to look at that and see if we can use that to finagle.
Um, life safety could regulate, uh, regulate, may reg, allow ability, but we couldn't regulate it out of the zoning ordinance, so.
So, life safety automatically is gonna apply just out of state law, we just can't regulate it.
On the application, can we say, subject to life safety?
Regulations.
Regulations.
Um, I think we actually have that already written in here, um.
You know, what if somebody with a four-bedroom house has eight adults and about twenty kids? And they put them all down the cellar and there's only a stairway to get up?
Cause that's not, that's not legal, cause you gotta have two means of egress, that's not legal anyway.
Yep.
But the problem is it would take something tragic before it was.
That's correct.
Now, and, and then everybody would be like.
There's a lot of people have a bedroom in the basement now that's not legal.
Yep.
You need a motion.
We need to open it to the public and then.
We need to open it to the public.
So at eight twenty-four, we'll open a public hearing on the short-term lodging changes, anybody from the public like to speak?
Oh, come on now, no, no.
Hearing, no takers, eight twenty-four, I'll close the public hearing.
Perfect, so the proposed motion would then be, uh, that the board recommends the, um, language as presented. Uh, go forward to City Council for their review and approval.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Beautiful.
Uh, I know we're anxious to get out of here this evening, I would like to bring up, um, so we, we've had some. Hot topics come forward to Planning Board and as conceptuals. With that, we've never had a re, time requirement or a deadline for submitting conceptuals to the Planning Board. So in the, in your, uh, Planning Board packet, we have an updated conceptual, uh, meeting schedule for Planning Board. And with that, we added a whole schedule for conceptual meetings, um, with, uh, applications metal deadlines. Uh, in which corresponding Planning Board meeting they would go to, so they would have to at least submit to us one week prior to the Planning Board meeting.
Which would, which would fix the problem we had last.
Yep, so last month there was a, they came in, I think it was on a, on a Friday, and, and they met, met the ninety-one A requirement. So we put it on the agenda, this would say, nope, if it wasn't here a week prior, you go to the next meeting, so.
I think that's, that's gonna make, you know, a, when something gets pointed out that there might be a little blip, if we could fix the blip, then that's, that's what it's all about.
You know, nobody's, nope, nope.
We just wanna bring that to your attention.
Before, nobody's ever said anything, but I think this fixes this moving forward and do?
Okay, we'll let you go.
Agreed, well done.
If he leaves, we won't have a quorum, so if there's nothing else on the agenda, I would say that, uh, somebody make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I, I will second that.